Welcome to the Olathe Board of Education Meeting.
At Indian Creek, we believe in being respectful, responsible, and reaching toward our future. We know that knowledge is power.
And we can make it a great day or not. The choice is ours. Go Wildcats!
I don't know. I'm okay.
Well, welcome to our regular March 2nd Board of Education meeting. Thank you for being here. Deb, would you take role, please?
Ms. Ashley, here. Mr. Churchman?
Here.
Dr. Drummond?
Here.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Parker? Mr. Pollan? Ms. Wilhelm, here.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Alls gonna introduce some very, very special people and have our pledge and then provide an overview.
Yes, I think we have some students here. Two ninth graders from Pioneer Trail Junior High. And I haven't had a chance to meet them yet, but I think our first student is Andy Miller, right? Okay. And our second student is Megan Pepper. And we're gonna do our pledge as we normally do when we open the meeting. And then I'll give you a little biographical information on these two students. And they may have some people with them tonight they'd like to introduce. So we'll be... You wanna start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could get you to stand over here just a little bit to my left. First of all, I'd like to introduce Andy. Andy's active in vocal music and theater at Pioneer Trail. He is a member of the Barbershop Quartex and Pizzazz, which I assume is the vocal music group. He was one of ten students from Pioneer Trail selected to be part of the state honor choir at the recent KMEA conference. Andy's a soccer player and he's also an honor roll student at Pioneer Trail. So we're very happy to have Andy here tonight. And would Andy introduce any of your guests?
Yeah, my mom, Ann Miller's here.
Would she stand up? Some of you may not realize that Ann Miller was a former teacher of ours who taught vocal music some years ago at Pioneer Trail, right? Right. So we're glad to keep the family in the system. Megan?
Megan is captain of the Aristocats Drill Team at Pioneer Trail and a member of the pep club. She's part of the Student Council Executive Council Letterman's Club and participates in track. She just found out that she was selected for the Olathe East Drill Team. She has represented Pioneer Trail on the Superintendent Student Advisory Council and is consistently on the All-A Honor Roll. And so Megan, would you like to introduce your guests?
My mother Debbie and my dad Ray.
Thank you. Thank you very much for taking your time to come here this evening. Oh, and Mrs. Schlesby, Principal of Pioneer Trail, you wanna stand up? We have a lot of students to be proud of in this district. Would you like me to go ahead with the overview?
Please do.
Thank you. This evening, we're going to have some informational reports and presentations. We'll have a student speaker from Olathe East who will lead off our reports. Then we'll have a presentation on the district-wide quality assessment, which is our efforts to gain input from our stakeholders and continuous improvement. We will then... We're not going to have the report tonight on human resources, facts, and services. We will hold that report and have that for our April meeting. And then we will have an update by Dr. George on school finance at the legislative level. And then we will have a report for our community on the strategic planning for academic excellence. Following a comfort break, we're going to have a junior high art exhibit reception. And for those of you that are here in the audience and in our facility, we display student art all throughout the year, and their parents and students will be here tonight to see them. We will then, following our comfort break, do our recognitions and awards. And following that, at about seven o'clock, we will entertain our public comments. Action items tonight include the consent agenda items. Those are items that the board previously has seen information on. They do not necessarily require detailed discussion, but a board member or the superintendent may pull any item from that list for separate discussion and separate vote. Following the consent agenda, we have action items. One action item is on the creation of a Bond 2007 Task Force. Second action item are some Kansas Association of School Board appointments to represent the Board of Education. There are a variety of future action items, reports. Some of those of interest will be the Board of Education's self-evaluation process that the board intends to initiate, and Dr. Drummond will speak to that. And there are a variety of other items, and the board president will identify those as we get to those this evening. Following those, there are additional written reports that the board has information on that they may or may not entertain questions at this time. And again, the board president will summarize those as we get to that part on the agenda. Following those reports, we will have an executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel to protect privacy interests. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. With all of that, let's move into another very special time for us, the Student Speakers Bureau.
Hello, thank you for having me this evening. My name is Jody Settle. I'm a senior at Olathe East High School this year. And I am here on behalf of the Olathe Student Speakers Bureau. And I'm gonna speak to you guys about leadership tonight and its importance to myself and the influence it's had on what I plan to do with my future and my role in my high school now. Many people ask, what exactly is leadership? And I guess it has a plethora of answers depending on, you know, what kind of student or individual you are. To me, being a good leader is anyone with an altruistic, you know, means and they're a constant role model in their daily lives for an individual to admire and look up to. It's a person of high morality that chooses, you know, the common good over their own personal incentive. And so with this, you know, title of leadership and being a role model, I think there's different means you can be a leader, whether that be through volunteering, being a productive student for individuals of my age group, and also being either holding a title in the community or in a school club of some sort. Many people are asked, who are they influenced by and what kind of drove them to be a leader? What I've learned through schooling and just personal experience is that parents have a lot to do with that. And I am thankful and grateful for my parents' support. They're here this evening, my mother Judy Settle and my father Mark. Many people have, you know, parents or mentors in their life that help them influence and determine the kind of individuals they are. And I'm thankful to have their moral support and, you know, just encouragement along the way to push me to be a leader and make myself stand out in my community and my school. Right now, my main objective is being a productive student in the classroom. I thankfully am very blessed to be, I guess, have, you know, some intelligence behind me. I don't have to work all that hard in school. I do study very much. Don't take me wrong, I study a lot, but I am blessed with some intellect. But I think what makes me stand out with my students in my Advanced Placement classes is that I take the extra initiative to do my homework on time and study for the test. It's not enough to just, you know, have the brains, but the willpower and the work ethic to use them. And I hope that my efforts in the classroom, whether that be respecting the teacher, turning in homework assignments on time, or just showing up and showing my, you know, admiration for the teacher standing in front of me, is a leader in the classroom. And I hope I am encouraging other students to do the same as well. I guess a personal incentive to be a leader academically is college entrance is getting so difficult these days. Resumes, test scores, interviews are all so competitive that you need to differentiate yourself from the pack. And becoming a leader in your high school is a great way to find your niche in the building and also in the competitive world of applying for colleges. So personally, I have an advantage because of all the leadership titles I hold and play in my school. I have a lot of support and respect from not only my peers, but also my teachers and administrators. So I'm very thankful for that. And thankfully, my hard work has paid off, you know, after hours working on all my projects. But I am currently the president of the National Honor Society at our high school, president of the French National Honor Society. I lead the Hock Leaders Program with another fellow student, Chris Glover. I'm sure you've all have heard about that at Olathe East. It's a fairly new program. I am... I do a lot of other things. I was on the volleyball team, dance team, different things like that. So although I may not hold, you know, a leadership title in that, like Student Council and Secretary and stuff, I try to voice my opinion and have an impact on those. So hopefully, that helps me when I'm applying for college, I'll look down the resume and see the leadership. But the main thing I've learned this year is it's a lot of work and it's not merely just a title on a page and things like that. It's so rewarding for myself and the others that are leaders with me because you get to see the direct impact your opinion and your voice has on the other students. And it's very exciting. And that's why I encourage so many other people to take up leadership roles. It's very important to the community and also to the individual. I'm very grateful for individuals like yourself that have stepped up and taken a community role in just, you know, the city of Olathe and also in the school district. Because if it weren't for individuals like yourself and many others out there, students like me would not have the opportunity to be standing up here today and have the opportunity to be heard. So that's another way to step up and, you know, get heard. You can also do activities like Habitat for Humanity. There's so many other ways to be a leader that's not in the spotlight. They do the work behind the scenes. And that's the big thing I've learned, is the different types of leadership roles that individuals can hold. I guess the Olathe School District, I am very grateful for all of the opportunities they have provided me. And the Leadership Studies Program at Olathe East this year, it's its first year and so kinda working the kinks out. And I'm fortunately not gonna be able to experience the full three years of the program, but I'm kinda working as an independent study student to try to put in some extra leadership curriculum. But I think that's really helped me develop my own personal leadership styles and work with other leaders in the school because we learn about the history of leadership. We learn about the different styles, how to use it, when to use it, things like that. And it's been very, very exciting. And I think other schools in the district, if hopefully they have the opportunity to take some sort of leadership classes because it's a very neat experience, and I'm very grateful for that. But most of all, the main reason I'm here tonight is just to encourage all of you out there to find some sort of leadership opportunity to pursue, step up, and, you know, differentiate yourself from the crowd and become an individual that people wanna look up to and admire and mimic in their actions. Because the main thing I've always learned is the right thing may not always be popular, but what is popular is usually not right. So I like... I'm very thankful to have the morals I am. I'm proud to be a leader in the Olathe School District and in the Olathe community. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Jody. That was outstanding. We appreciate it. And it was enjoyable to watch the smile on your mom and dad's face. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Dr. George, you have a couple of reports in a row here for us. One is the district-wide quality assessment and then school finance.
The first one that we're gonna talk about is the district-wide quality assessment. And several years ago, we started this... We started this particular assessment in our district. And it's an opportunity for us to get some information from our parents, our certificated staff, our teachers, administrators, our support staff, and from our students. The process of developing the survey involved focus groups, and that involved a number of different people. And then we took that and we took all the information, and it tended to cluster into about thirteen areas. And there were things like leadership and communication, providing adequate resources, and maintenance of facilities, et cetera. Safety was another one. We developed statements in each of those areas, and then people were able to read the statement and they could indicate whether they strongly agreed with it, agreed with it, were neutral on it, or disagreed or strongly disagreed, or simply didn't know. And then we piloted it, we modified it again, and it's gone through a number of revisions since 1999, 2000, when it was first administered. And we've continued to do that. So that's kind of a little bit of the background on the survey. It was administered in 99, 2000, then again every two years after that. And this fall was the last administration that we have. There are things that are different this year. We have more segmentation of staff data, and that's some pieces that we will be analyzing as we go along. And we hope to add a business component so we not only have students and staff and parents, but also the business community, and that will be forthcoming. There are some really very positive, some positive things coming out of this. And whoops. Wants to run backwards or something. We wanted to find out a little bit about where we were with respect to customer service. We did a lot of training with our frontline staff last year. Over three hundred people went through that training. And so a year after the training, we found that our customer service numbers were very positive. Elementary parents tended to agree or strongly agree 96.84% of the time that the school staff provides good customer service to parents. And we felt that that was very good considering the... It had been a year since the training. And that was a very positive indication. Our secondary parents weren't quite as high, but once again, very high numbers, very positive numbers. We continued that a little bit. We have a standard that says that within... If a non-emergency call comes in, there should be a response within 24 hours. And usually, it's much faster than that. But sometimes, because of after-school activities and when planning periods occur, it's difficult to get back with people. But in 2003, '04, you can see the data. We had ninety-seven, almost 98% of our elementary parents were indicated that that was taking place. And about 92% of our secondary parents, this fall when we did the survey, were over 98% of our elementary parents indicate that we're meeting that standard. And almost 98% of our secondary parents are there with us. And so we felt very positive about that. Then we had another question that was new this year, and that's, would you refer parents to the Olathe Schools? And you can see the numbers there. And we're able to benchmark that with a district that was a Baldridge recipient and in suburban Chicago. And our elementary numbers, our K-6 numbers are just getting better. The benchmark, however, was a K-8, but our secondary numbers are also quite high. The safety cluster, you have information there. And once again, the numbers are very strong. And then there was a section on staff quality, and this is several questions that deal with staff quality. Once again, the numbers are strong. And as you continue through the areas of leadership, once again, very strong numbers and improving numbers. Instruction continues to be very strong and improving, and that's fantastic. Communication, always an important area, and that is holding steady with the elementary parents and improving a little bit with the secondary parents. Staff quality, we have that again there, and those numbers are very strong. The adequacy of materials, this deals with the issue of library books and technology and this kind of thing. Numbers are pretty good. I did have a slight reduction there on the elementary, just a little bit. Supportive relationships, very important, and you can see that those numbers are very strong. Expectations, this is the issue of having high expectations for staff and for students. And once again, you can see the numbers that we have. Very, very positive numbers, very healthy numbers. Post-graduation success, once again, very positive numbers that we have. Survey also gives us data on how stakeholders view board performance. And when you look at this, you can see that in all groups, over the four different times that we've administered this particular survey, the numbers are improving. And when you look at the 99, 2000, and you look at where you end up in '05, '06, very positive trends. In some cases, there'll be some movement up and down from year to year, which you would expect, but the numbers are very positive. You have the elementary parents, the secondary parents also very positive, and once again, improving. When you move to the certified staff, the numbers have improved and gone up. And support staff, the numbers have improved and gone up. So we're very pleased with the data. Some of the things that we're doing now is distributing the data to the schools. Obviously, there may be some areas, some opportunities for improvement that we'll wanna work on and develop some action plans to try to address those particular items. And then we want to finalize the business component. And then the final step will be to evaluate the process and see where we go from there. And there may be some things that we wanna do with the process in the future because this does take time. And if there are ways that we can do this that are faster or more efficient and consume less time, then we certainly wanna look at those. And so those are some things that we'll be doing with that in the future. In terms of the total number of responses, we had about 6,200 people participate among the students, staff, and parents who participated in the survey. Parents fill out a form at parent-teacher conferences in the fall. The other people participated in an online survey at their buildings. Are there questions?
Churchman?
Dr. George, thank you for this report. It's excellent information, by the way. As I look across the statistics here, one area that seems to be lagging is the parents' view of the Board of Education's communication. Can you elaborate on that or what some of the impediments may be or the perceptions behind that?
Not without further work. I noticed that too, but I think without some additional probing, it's hard to know. And that may involve some focus groups. It may involve some additional targeted surveys to get additional information. And without more information, it's hard to know. I think that area has come up some, but it still may not be where we'd like it to be. And so it's one that we're gonna have to look into.
Thank you. As I reviewed that assessment, the one that I highlighted was the one about communication, Board of Education communication. Would like to point out that we have improved significantly since 1999, 2000 with... Across all levels, except this year, we fell back with elementary parents somewhat. I think two things. I think that our visits to the site councils is going to make a big improvement. And I think that broadcasting public comments is going to help some of that perception as well. And this evening, I think we're probably gonna take action and make some decisions about board self-evaluation. And I think in that process, as we self-evaluate our work, we certainly can look at that and say, what are some additional ways that we can reach out and communicate with the people? And I think also putting the Board of Education on the web, the Board of Education meetings on the website, all of those are positive steps that are going to help us. That being said, certainly more work to be done.
One thing I might mention is that this was done at the fall conferences, Gary, and so the community conversations had not occurred yet. So that's another strategy that we implemented this year. So I think we've taken some action steps. It'll be interesting to see a year from now, you know? And there are other things I think that we can look at, and through your self-evaluation process, I'd be supportive of other ideas, so.
And Dr. George, what was the overall percentage of the respondents?
It varied by, like, parents and support staff and certified staff and students. And I'll have to get that for you. I don't have that. We had a total of about 6,200 people participate. But in terms of the percentage of certificated staff who participated in the survey versus how many are employed in the district, I don't have that percentage in front of me tonight.
Yeah, I think to Mr. Parker's point and to Dr. Alls' point, there's been a lot of great things that have been done. The addition of the meetings to the web where you can go out and view those, to me, is something the staff needs to be commended upon. The other thing that I would like to ask, because I've heard a few requests, is to make the meeting minutes for these meetings available in hard copy in the library. And I know we have those on the web, but there are a number of people that have asked for the ability to be able to go up into the library and sit and review those.
I believe... Where's Laura Lee? Did she step out?
I believe that the agenda is at the library. The difficulty with that, I think it gets to the library on Monday. And then if a patron wants to get a copy of it, they need to... They have to take the agenda and go to the copier and copy it, which is expensive and time-consuming. And frankly, a lot of folks are just not gonna have that kind of time to do that. When we can get to board docs, in other words, when we get an electronic board meeting and we can have everything as a part on the web, and then patrons would be able to... And we've discussed that in the past, and I understand we're moving that direction. And there's some technology things that we have to deal with and add and be able to scan everything so we can make it available. When we get to that, I think we would make a huge stride forward.
Yeah. Is that what you're talking about, Jim?
Well, it's not the agenda. It's the actual meeting minutes. And, you know, I had to stop and think about it because the people that reached out to me don't have internet access, and I think we take it for granted today that everybody does. And that's by choice. And they just wanna be able to go into the library and sit at their convenience and look at the meeting minutes.
I'll check into whether the actual minutes are put at the library. I do know that they're on the web. I do know that we produce them here just as an open record request so that anybody could call this office and we would produce that for them. But I do think the direction we're going where we can have it electronically serves the needs of those people that are electronic users, it still doesn't... We're gonna have parallel systems for a long time so that we're meeting all of the... Of our constituencies, those who wanna have that piece of paper in front of them. And so we'll look for ways to maybe even study some places where we could have some additional placement of that. So we'll do that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Churchman, I misunderstood. I thought we were talking about the agenda and you're talking about the minutes.
Yeah, they've asked for the actual meeting minutes and just where they can do.
We can't post the minutes on the website?
We are.
But that still is an issue with somebody.
But he's talking about the hard copies for people who don't have internet access, I think.
My first response was the internet and so... Okay, good. Thank you.
Dr. George, two questions. One, on the customer service, did I hear you say this is the first year that that was included in the survey?
The very first question, yes. The second question about the 24-hour turnaround, that's been on the question, the survey before. And then the third item there in the PowerPoint dealt with the issue of would people refer a new resident to the school district?
Right, new resident.
And that's a new one. And we picked that one because it enabled us to benchmark against another district in another part of the country that had a very high support from its community.
And that was my second question. Is that the only area that was benchmarked? Or did you take the majority of this and benchmark it against that district?
No. Many of these questions do not benchmark with respect to that particular district. But there's some other surveys that we are doing that we're able to benchmark against other organizations or other districts or other businesses and be able to compare data that way.
Was the customer service a concern? And thus the reason for adding it? And why I'm asking that question is if it was a concern, then are we going to wait two years to collect data again? Or is that something that would be included and asked sooner than that?
That's an issue that we want to always have excellent customer service and be very invitational and meet the needs of our stakeholders. And I don't think that's one of those things that we wanna wait two years on. We'll want to be surveying that or getting some kind of data more frequently. And we're beginning to have some discussions about a pulse survey that's similar to having your pulse taken when you go to the doctor. And rather than wait two years and find out that we've got a problem, let's begin to take some smaller surveys more frequently and see where we are. There's some logistics that we've gotta work through on that, but that's a piece that we wanna look at and see if we can make it work so that we have some in-process data and we don't have to just wait two years and hope for the best.
Okay.
Hope is not a real good strategy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments? Obviously, our district's been doing this for a long time. We believe in quality improvement and quality management. And as you review these as a whole, in almost all of them individually, if not... And as you review these as a whole, and almost all of them individually, if not all of them, this is excellent. We appreciate it. We're not awry, but we're getting closer every year. So thanks for all your hard work and those who work with you, Dr. George. It helps us continue to move toward the cutting edge.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. School finance, if you could bring us that report, please.
Okay. The next item here is the issue of school finance and particularly the House Finance Plan. Now, the Senate come out with a plan today, but it's very, we just have some very preliminary information on it. There's no bill number, there's no text for a bill, so I'm not going to spend much time talking about the Senate plan. But on the House Finance Plan, it's been out several days now, and we do know a little bit about it. The House Finance Plan projects about $175 million in funding for this year. Now, the post-audit indicated that between $316 and $399 million was needed for '06-'07. So there's certainly some differences here. This House plan is a three-year plan, and it projects an increase in the base from 42-57, adding $50 for next year, and then taking the 43-07 and adding 49, and then the 43-56 and adding 35. And so this is what we're looking at as we project out. The increases are not really that much in the base, but there are some other things that are added to the plan. For '05-'06, the at-risk funding, that's this year, is .193, and you can see it's projected to increase for the next three years in a row. And that's positive for us. The downside is that there's more reporting requirements, so there are a little more paperwork with it. But certainly more funding to meet the needs of our at-risk students. Special education, you may recall in the last legislative session, they increased special ed funding over a three-year period. We had an increase this year. Next year, it's projected to go to 89.3% of excess cost, and then in '06-'07 to 92% of excess cost. The, there is a proposal to have a scholarship fund for bilingual education, and this would be for the teachers to get their credentials and get the, their paperwork, their certification, licensure, et cetera, so that they could get, we could, they could be properly certified and get full reimbursement. It is subject to appropriations. And, but it would help cover books and tuition and those kinds of things for teachers who are interested in becoming or adding a bilingual endorsement to their certificate. There is a high-density at-risk waiting, and this is for districts that have 212 students, .1 students per square mile, and a poverty rate of 35.1% or higher. And then that goes up a little bit more each year. It appears that this will be helping about six districts in the state that have a great amount of urban poverty. There is some controversy in this area. There are some areas where districts that have a whole lot higher poverty levels, but they don't have the density. And there's some concern about that, and they also have needs, and so that'll be no doubt a point of much discussion. The correlation weighting is now going to be called high enrollment equalization, and it improves a little bit each year for the next three years. And under the House plan, that would be worth about $1 million a year for us over the next three years in improvements. Vocational weighting, they're proposing to delete some courses, and then the remaining courses would be weighted higher than they are now. And it's hard to know without going through and doing enrollment counts and so forth to know for sure how much of a net gain or net loss each district will have across the state. And there's been no printout given to us on that particular one, at least I haven't seen one from the state. It does restrict some funding, and it does have a lot more reporting with it. And I'll come back to that reporting piece in a little bit. Needs assessment would have to be done, and this, each year, each, or the school districts in the state would have to conduct a needs assessment of every attendance center in the school district on forms prepared by the State Board. And then the district budget would have to be based on that. And in small districts with two or three buildings, it may not be such an issue, but in larger districts, this becomes quite a process. Budget forms would be based on budget reporting standards developed by legislative post-audit rather than by the school business officials and some other accepted bodies who develop budget forms. And so this may be another thing that we'll have to get used to and be looking at some different forms than we've had in the past, or they may take on a little different look. Vocational weighting, at-risk programs, preschool at-risk, and bilingual education all have additional reporting requirements. And that may put additional burdens on the school districts to comply. And then we wonder sometimes if somebody in the State Department is really going to read all of those reports that come in from 300-plus districts and 1,600-plus schools that we have in the state. But that's something that is in the proposed bill at this time. Some analysis here, we don't know where the Supreme Court will be on this particular issue. It's certainly less than was indicated by the cost study, and we don't know how the Supreme Court will respond to that. And the funding of the base and the out-years, it's probably going to be less than the rate of inflation, although it's hard to project what inflation may be. Staff development, there's no funding for staff development in this, and the standard and poor study indicated that that was extremely important. Full funding across the state would be $8 million. And I believe this year, they provided $1 million, so it's prorated again. And then this does, this bill doesn't call for any money for mentoring or national board certification. The new facility weighting and the ancillary facility weighting, which are both very important to us, do remain in the formula, and that's important. This particular, bilingual funding stays in the formula. This particular bill doesn't appear to require a tax increase the first year. When you look at the new money over the three years, approximately 46% of the new money would be targeted to a small number of districts. And that's that urban density piece that I spoke about a little bit ago. The LOB does not change from what was enacted into law last year, 29%, and then 30% that's in statute. There is a piece that I haven't commented on in new Section 3 that if a school district fails to make accreditation, isn't doing well with AYP and so forth, then the State Board notifies the local board, and the local board has the opportunity to change its funding and adjust its budget to address that particular issue. And that gets into a whole issue of local control versus state control, and that's another piece in this. The committee has held hearings the past couple of days, and will begin working this bill tomorrow. And then it'll be worked into next week. And then probably sometime next week, we'll begin to reach the House floor. The Senate has entered, has a bill that is beginning to move or was introduced by some senators today. It doesn't have a bill number. Probably will have a bill number, and we'll be able to get printed copies in the next day or two. And then hearings will be held in the Senate Education Committee, and we'll begin that process on the Senate side. This bill, this House bill, is worth about $5.1 million to the district based on the changes in these weightings and based on our enrollment from September 20th of this year. Now, we will end up with more money than that because of growth. We'll end up with more money in this bill because of the bilingual weighting and so on and so forth. But the printout that we got on the things that are known and the changes that are built into the bill showed about a $5.1 million increase. I think that one of the things that we have to think about is where we'll be in three years, and we have to look at those out-years. And that increase in the base for that third year, that's not a whole lot. And that's about the same time that the small sales tax that we have will be going away. So those are some things that we'll just have to kind of keep in mind and work through this. And obviously, this is a first step. It won't be the final bill. There'll be a lot of work done and a lot of modification before we get to a final bill. But this is what we have at this point in the House, and I'm glad that we have a bill at this early that we can begin to talk about, and we'll have to see where it goes from here. Are there questions?
Questions? Anything you want to say about the Senate bill?
It's worth more money to us. It's about $6.6 million, and that's certainly desirable. But in terms of the text of the bill, it's not printed yet, so I really can't comment on it much more than that. It is, it does involve more money, more money in the out-years, but I, without seeing the text, it's hard to comment on it.
Sure, thank you. I think Mr. Gilmore has questions.
Dr. George, the big unknown here still is how is the court going to react to this? And there's discussion about they're trying to do something early to give the court time to read this prior to the session ending. Am I reading that correctly?
That's one scenario, to get something to the court by April 1st, when they are thereabouts, when the legislature will adjourn, and then they will come back for their veto session at the end of April and early May. And that would give the court some time to react if they can get their proposal signed by the governor and over to the Supreme Court. Many lawmakers would like that to happen because if they're running for reelection, they'd like to have the summer to campaign and not have to have a special session in the summer. On the other hand, it may not work out that way. There is also some concern about if the Supreme Court, will they buy off on it? Will they retain control? What kind of opinion will they have? There is some thought that if the Supreme Court orders more funding, then that may cause some of the members of the legislature to want to go to a constitutional amendment to change some things with the court. So there's a lot of things going on here, and we're a long way from the end, but it may get very interesting before it's all over. We do hope that we're able to get something decided early so that we can conclude negotiations and begin to plan or conclude our planning for next year and be ready to go and not have to go through a summer session like we did last year. That was very difficult, I think, for everybody and created a lot of problems.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. All, any comments you want to make?
I'm sorry I had to step out for a second, so I didn't hear the very beginning part. But I think it's important to know that a lot of, and I think was mentioned, a lot of the additional dollars that the state would be committing, and it's, and it is additional dollars, are going to be in those high-density urban areas. I think one of our representatives said that Kansas City, Kansas revenue from this would be larger than what all of Johnson County school districts would get. So we need to take a look at this. You know, it's intended to try to meet some of the court's requirements for dealing with at-risk. It still doesn't deal with the issue that at-risk is not defined here still by whether or not they're academically meeting expectations, but still based on poverty alone. And I know that in talking with some of the other Johnson County superintendents, that's still a point that we try to make. And the discussion that over several years, we're going to be, you know, fine for next year, and we're going to be fine for the second year because we have some benefits from the special ed funding and otherwise. But we're going to probably be talking more about three, four years, three, four, and five, and whether, you know, what that will look like. That may be too far out to do anything more than just talk. But that's, that's the point that I think we're going to have the most discussion, is not so much for next year, but down the road.
Dr. George, I have one other question, just a clarification. You talked about the Section 3 at the very end of your presentation, which talked about districts meeting AYP or schools, and that then a local board could change its funding to address the issue. Does that mean addressing the issue of specific schools that did not meet AYP? And does that mean that then the funding becomes a local board issue to rebalance funding within that district to meet those needs?
Well, the legislation says that whenever the State Board determines that a school has failed to meet either accreditation requirements established by rules and regs and adopted or has these other issues, then they'll notify the local board, and upon receipt of such notification, the Board of Education of such a district shall reallocate resources to remedy all deficiencies identified by the State Board. So we would have to rearrange our budget to address those deficiencies. And that's the, that's going to be, I think, a contentious issue in that this whole issue of local control versus state control and, you know, you can have groups that move in and out of a district that could create the problem and then be gone, and yet the district would still have to address the issue. And so there's a lot of, a lot of concern about that particular item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent report. Appreciate it. Dr. Banikowski, Strategic Planning for Academic Excellence.
Thank you. It's a wonderful opportunity to present to you again this evening. And the, Dr. All had asked me to present the February Special Board Meeting, a very capsulized version of the PowerPoint that you had already seen on that evening, except this is a reduced version. So an opportunity for our parents and our patrons in our community to also have some of the same information that you were provided in February at our Special Board Meeting. As you might remember, at that time, we talked about how that session at the February Special Board Meeting was just building upon prior sessions of information that we had shared on everything from student learning to growth and funding sources and funding patterns. And so this was just a continuation of all those conversations. On that evening, I provided you with information about student learning needs. You had already had information about growth needs, and you had also had information about refurbishing of our current facility needs. And so that my focus was certainly on student learning, goals, and initiatives. At that time, we talked again about the, like, the decision-making process, and it was that process that we used to help determine where we were going to go as we strategically planned. And in a simplistic way, we talked about how we determine needs. And from those needs, we identify target goals, develop action plans, monitor and adjust along the way. And certainly, we know as we look at the sources of how we determine those needs, it's very much like putting pieces of a puzzle together. And we talked about five basic groupings, if you will, of those pieces of the puzzle. Everything from input from stakeholders, student achievement data, external mandates that provide information for us on what we need to do and what targets we need to establish, that world around us scan, and research on teaching and learning. At that time, I provided you just a little few pieces of that puzzle. We reviewed, except in much more depth than we are here this evening, information from our community conversation in which we obtained input from our stakeholders. We talked about the 14 themes that were prevalent across our conversations with our groups and the various questions that we asked at that time, that nearly 3,300 individuals that we did have an opportunity to visit with in our conversations. So we reviewed that because that was an important part of our stakeholder input. It helped and paralleled very much what we had heard in 2001 as we did focus groups on the 21st Century Program, paralleled what also we heard in 2003 and 2004 as we talked about student learning with our community. Certainly, that's not the only stakeholder input we have. You heard tonight from Dr. George about a district-wide quality assessment. That provides us information on needs and areas that we are doing well in and areas that we want to strengthen, and certainly our Special Education Parent Survey that we recently shared with you. We also talked about student achievement data as a second point, and it's so important to us because we are a data-driven decision-making organization. We need to look at our student achievement data to determine what we need to work on next. And we talked about the many reasons we have to celebrate in student achievement data, but we also know because we believe in continuous improvement that we need to continue to look for those opportunities for improvement and continue to move forward on student achievement. And partially also, the bar keeps changing, and so we need to make sure that we're achieving those standards that we have set for ourselves and others have set for us. So that's the second piece of the puzzle. The third piece of the puzzle we talked about was external mandates. And certainly, one large external mandate, already mentioned again by Dr. George, is No Child Left Behind and adequate yearly progress and how that is defined in Kansas, and the fact that in Kansas, we also have intertwined accreditation and AYP. We did, of course, remind ourselves that there were many changes ahead, No Child Left Behind and adequate yearly progress. And though I think a few of you were surprised, again, as I tell you that the targets are not clearly defined, and that is what we're working for, we know that in many senses that are the, that's the challenges that we have to meet for this external mandate. A second external mandate that I mentioned on that evening was the external mandate of the third science requirement that has been added for our graduates. And certainly, we know that has impact on additional coursework, additional teachers, and will have some facility impact by 2008. So that was the third factor that we talked about related to determining needs. The fourth one we talked about was external, the world around us. And we talked again today in another group I was in, again, that competition for math and science and the need for engineers in the United States. We have to take that pieces of information as we determine curriculum and courses for our students. The fact that technology is going to be needed in so many careers, six out of 10, a lot of the literature will tell you, careers that will need. of the literature will tell you, careers that will need technology. That needs to impact our discussion of what should our targets be for our student learning targets as we look at academic achievement. And the last piece, the fifth piece that we talked about that we look at as we determine where are we going to focus our energies and what targets do we need to establish was research. We are a research organization. We need to research what is happening in teaching and learning, what helps students to learn better, to retain better. And so those are some of the areas that I just highlighted from the research. There are certainly many, such as early childhood programs, help disadvantaged children. Certainly know that underrepresented students need high expectations and high support. And later this evening in your written reports, you will see a report on a program that helps to provide that high support for students who are not currently accessing high levels of curriculum, academic achievement curriculum. So that's a piece of the literature that we're bearing on our actions that we're taking. So that was the five areas of data that we talked about and summarized in a little bit more detail. And then we talked about that from there, we established our target goals. That evening, we shared with you again, as of building up from December, a Special Board Meeting, that we are setting student learning targets in two areas. Advancing all learners, which we heard so clearly again from our community conversation. We need to make sure that we're helping the students in the middle, the students at the top, to advance their learning, as well as working with accelerating our challenged learners and their learning. So those are the two areas that we work on to establish the targets, many of the targets which we've already initiated and started working on over the last several years. Not that I expect us to read that, but just as a reminder to us all, that was the handout I provided that evening with the target goals identified, both in those two areas that we talked about. I gave you some sample, more than this, but some of the sample proposed actions that we are proposing to take in order for us to achieve those goals that we shared that evening, such as increasing our resources for advanced elementary readers. So when you see budget initiative information, you're going to see a line item that says, we need to take a look at that, study that again thoroughly next year, and come up with some additional resources in that area. We talked about the need to come up with an elementary international language program if we're going to meet the needs of our community, that they have stated over in our community conversation as well as elsewhere, as well as to help prepare our students for that world scan, the world of the future, in which having, being multilingual is going to be very important. We also talked about some of the actions we're proposing to take for our challenged learners if we're going to achieve those targets that we have identified, such as increasing our four-year-old jumpstart program that's currently in place at Rolling Ridge Elementary. It's a grant program from the state. And of course, we'll have to see where that falls in the funding pattern from the state as well. But right now, we're serving approximately 30 children a year. We have many more children that could use that services to help prepare them for success in their schooling program. We also talked about increasing our need for remedial math teachers, which we have been working on in the district with our reading programs. Now, we also need to look at that avenue as well, and as well as looking at a technology-based intervention program for our students. So again, we just highlighted some of those actions that you will see come forth, some that we've already initiated, some that we need to bring to scale, and some that we will just seek to initiate this coming school year. We also talked about, while we didn't focus a lot of time on this, we talked about how important it was going to have parent initiative targets as well, if we're going to achieve those academic targets. We talked about expanding our parent education opportunities. And next month at our meeting, we're going to hear more about what we're already doing in parent involvement, parent education, and how we need to take a look at expanding that as we continue to work together as a team to have academic excellence for our students. We talked about each one of those targets having action plans, baseline data, specific target data, and a margining and evaluation process, because that's very important as we determine where we're going to put our priorities to achieve those targets that we have identified. We also said that many of these targets have already been identified, and budget initiative information has been set forth, working with Mr. Deener on that process. We might have put things in for capital outlay if we need some additional T-180 calculators in order to achieve our goals. We have put things in for staffing requests if we're going to have more additional remedial math teachers. So those are the kind of things that we're working on currently in our budgeting process and our prioritization process. A very small portion of that evening, but a critical portion of that evening, was to talk about some crucial conversations, and I use the book, The Tipping Point, that we were at in determining if we could achieve those goals, and some barriers, if you will, or challenges to those conversations. And the two areas we talked about were how we can provide accelerated opportunities commenced with benchmark districts. And as you know, the Baldridge Process, as well as our own desire to be excellent and to be great, we look at benchmark districts. And we have some questions on how we can provide that kind of acceleration that some other districts do because of our organizational structure. And so we laid that on the table because that was an important factor that we need to discuss as we move toward those targets that we have identified. We shared some ways that we're already trying to provide some acceleration, but some challenges that we've had with that, such as pre-algebra being available only for students who want to make it prior to their school day, starting at 7:00 a.m., and for those elementary children who have parents that can provide them transportation. So we talked about some of the challenge there and what we've already tried. And the last thing that we talked about is challenges, is okay, it's wonderful to think about adding additional jumpstart four-year-old programs and additional voluntary fee-based kindergarten programs, but we do lack something called space in a number of our buildings. And so we talked about some of those challenges that we have to achieve those targets, put those initiatives that we know would be very profitable for us as we try to achieve those targets. How can we put them into place when we have some things that are constraining us? And we provided those as an opportunity for the board, as well as the BOM task boards that is coming up, to take a look at and make sure they look at all those factors as we make decisions for the future. And so that ended with us reviewing that our five board strategic directions have been set for us. We believe we can achieve those, work toward those. But at that night, we had an opportunity to share a little bit more about student learning initiatives and targets as we work to provide that academic excellence, positive, safe learning environment, a quality, world-class educational program, as we, in conclusion, help students be prepared for their future. So that's kind of a recap, a little capsulized view, actually, of that a little longer opportunity we had on the evening, but an opportunity for others to have that information as well. So any questions that you might have at this time? Be glad to entertain.
Questions or comments? I didn't know that you could speak any faster than you did last time you gave this, but you really did. Did a great job.
Cutting out quite a few slides.
Didn't miss a beat.
Dr. Drummond, I think it's important for the audience to know, and as well as for the viewing audience, that at our Special Board Meeting in February, the board spent two hours with this material, talking about this material. So this is just kind of a summary of that. So it's not that we haven't paid any attention to it or don't have any questions. We asked many questions in our February Special Meeting, so.
Good comment. Thank you very much, Dr. Banikowski. Appreciate it. We are just about at the time for our comfort break, and there is a junior high art exhibit right out here with a reception going on. I think maybe if we take an extra couple of minutes and look at some of this great art and talk with the patrons, and then try to be back here in about 10 minutes to get ready for our recognitions and awards. So we will adjourn until then.